January 2012 meeting of the Greens' First Plan Commission is now in session. We have a roll call, please.
Okay. Bruce?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Roy?
Here.
Glenn?
Here.
And Tom?
I've heard that Tom lived here. He lives just on the area of the downtown.
Something.
And then John?
Oh, I'm sorry. John?
Here.
You're sitting right beside me.
All right. Everybody here, the first order of business will be election of new officers. Will you get a nomination for president, please?
I'd like to nominate Lynn Kennedy for president.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Steve, Bud.
How many nominations are closed? Make it official.
Who's second with the nomination process?
I think it's the second.
Okay.
Chief, thanks, guys. So, we do need to have an alternate vice president for this place in case I'm not able to be here, so I would accept nominations or volunteers for the office of vice chair, vice president. Is there a second to that nomination? Kevin seconded, thank you. Are there other nominations?
That we nominate Lynn Secretary of Transit Secretary.
Okay. I'm voting for vice president, if there's any other nomination.
I'll move with those nominations for vice president.
Move that's been closed, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second to that. All in favor of Mr. Rockover for vice chair, vice president, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. And now, we do need a secretary.
Okay, I'll nominate Lynn Secretary of Transit Secretary.
Okay. And we would then need a second.
Second.
John has seconded that nomination. I don't know that there are others that are eagerly wanting this position, but in case there would be, is there any other nomination?
I can only nominate the nominations we closed.
Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Nancy. You've unanimously supported in your presidential. We have two other items of business, but before we go on to the new business, we will go circle back to minutes of the previous meeting. There was a meeting, apparently, the last meeting was November the 15th. Is that right?
Yes.
I was not at that meeting. Blake was not at that meeting, but it was John. So, we have three of you who are here. I suppose we would ask you to affirm or make any changes in these minutes.
I didn't notice anything. And you? I have a motion to minutes accepted.
Okay. Those in favor of minutes being accepted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And those of us abstaining would be the rest of us. I did a quick, real quick read of these minutes, and it was just very quick. So, I'm not really sure what's all in here, but there was a, here at the end, it said the board wants a committee to report the January meeting. Committee makes recommendations to the board. It's not on the agenda, so is the committee not ready to make a report? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, that would be correct.
Okay. We'll come back to that then at some point for the meetings. We'll wrap a couple of questions, I don't want to, so we know where we're at.
We need to, but we can do that.
Okay. Well, we'll take care of the order of business here. I'll add that as a new item of new business under new years. This board has an appointment that's made to the zoning appeals. The zoning appeals is the board that looks at options, making exceptions for general ordinances that we have in terms of zoning. And Lynn had been that person, so we are meeting someone. This doesn't have to be by, this could be a volunteer, it could be somebody we elect, or it could be just by consensus. I don't know if there's somebody here that wants to do that, speak up. We got two people here, Blake and Kevin vote? Do we want to flip a coin, we want to vote, or what's the rule of the board here? Do we got two persons that want, willing to do it?
We're happy to.
Okay. Kevin's volunteered. Looking at board members, is that by consensus? Is that something we can do by consensus?
As far as I'm concerned, it is.
Great. Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin, your new appointee to the zoning appeals. We have, the other piece of new business here is the Upland Reservoir annexation. We're just trying to clear up kind of a hole in city boundaries. And we're exiting the Upland Reservoir, which is city-owned property into the city limits. So, this would take a recommendation back to the Plan Commission, sorry, to the city council to proceed with that annexation. And at this point, just a couple of questions, clarification. I know we can probably, I have to be reminded of the laws with regard to annexation. We need the one eighth contiguous. We do? Yes. Okay. So, it is now because of Honda, basically. Prior to this, it wasn't.
As well, north side is city as well, so.
Oh, yeah, since we did, we did that annexation, okay. And the, if, I'm going to use the property of the chair here to ask a few questions, but I'm not the one that's going to have to, can't ask questions. You all speak up, and I'll try and, maybe I'll do that first. I'll wait. Board members, do you have questions of Gary here with regard to reasons, or you all understand, you got any further questions you want to clarify here?
Can you get some background?
Yeah. Two real simple reasons. It is a hole now, it's another county piece of county property, county-owned property inside the city limits. That's one reason to annex it. Another reason is, I would like to put a sign along the interstate there with city property. And to do that, we're going to have to have to have it surveyed out, and that cost won't be there anyway, to have it surveyed out so we can install the sign. Now, so I'm like, who wants to not kind of money to survey, who wants to survey all, annex all of the city, that would be a good thing. We would have to, according to county ordinances on signage, if we went to there, I think ours probably would ever sign one, so that's one reason to annex it.
Other questions?
The reason I want the sign up is not to advertise to people, but promote the city of Greensboro, what we have in Greensboro, to try to create people to want to promote the Greensboro, that's the main reason. It's advertised what we do have off here in the Greensboro, Gator County.
So, the sign would be on the I-74 side?
Yes.
And, okay. Makes sense?
It's a light blue line, but the proposed annexation is.
Yes. Other questions? All right. There is anybody here from the public to be heard, to comment? I don't see anybody from the public with a question at this point in time. Seems to be a prudent thing to do, have your own property, control your own property. So, without any further questions, I would maintain a motion for, to dispose of this one way or the other, say yea or nay, but you will.
Okay. I move, I made a motion that we annex the Upland Reservoir into city property.
Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded the motion. Any further questions? Further discussion? Move seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's done. That's my attorney friend here. You notice I did a little change here with regard to voting, when we have something that seems to be, brought consensus on. I know a lot of times, people always ask for a roll call vote. Is there any procedure that says that we have to, or we should, or what's better or worse?
You can do oral vote, the only, the only time when you want to, need to do a roll call, roll call vote, when an oral vote doesn't produce a clear result. You're fine doing it this way when there's no decision, as long as it doesn't sound close.
Well, and if there be a circumstance where there would be lots of discussion about it, and some concern, then I probably would ask for a roll call vote, just, you know, give people an opportunity to explain your vote, or to clarify anything with regard to what they're doing, and make sure that people are involved. Okay. I just think it moves things along a little bit, if I have to. And, can we get, all right. That's the end of our printed agenda. I want to circle back to the November 15th meeting. If, because I was not there, nor was John, and was Blake, I don't think either of you were there with you. You were there? I think I might have been there, but I guess I would like to know where we stand with, it was the sign ordinance, right? But I wasn't part of the meeting per se. What has been, at that, the conclusion there was that there was going to be a committee to further review the proposed sign ordinance, is that right? So, Roy, Bruce, Kevin, one of you, or all of you, maybe can give, bring the rest of us up, speak where we're at on all this.
Okay. I guess since I kind of headed up the committee with Gary's help, between him, we can discuss.
Gary, you referring to Mr. Mayor?
No, Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore.
Murray, Moore, where did I get?
See, I'm a terrible fan of the media.
Yes. Murray.
Okay.
Gary Murray, I'm sorry, Gary.
Well, it all started Sean Green had come to the mayor, expressing difficulties in working with our current ordinance. He asked Kathy Reynolds and I, former committee, to tighten up any imminunities in the ordinance.
He meaning Mr. Green?
The mayor.
Yeah.
So, we asked the volunteers from the Plan Commission and the BZA to sit on that committee with us to review the ordinance. Roy and Steve volunteered their time to look at the ordinance.
Roy, Midendorf, and?
Steve Moore is the BZA mayor.
We, as a committee, came up with a draft, kept Mr. Green in the loop. He was able to review it. It was only draft when it was presented at the November meeting, and at that time, it was opened up for other people that wanted to be on the committee. Now, we knew we had some people coming on the Plan Commission that were new, and some new member coming on the BZA, that we wanted to afford that same opportunity. They wanted to volunteer to be on the committee, the committee to review the sign ordinance. I felt they should be offered that opportunity. This is the first meeting in the year. I don't know if we want, if we want to do it now, if we want to talk about the makeup of the committee. Personally, we have one individual who has a problem with the signage, that since they can't work within it, and we don't, as a planning, zoning department, have too many problems with other people. Does it need to be tightened up? Yes.
Okay.
To make it a little clearer.
Can you just ask a clarifying question here? So, no committee has met since November, because you wanted to kind of, because there was new people coming, you wanted to provide opportunity for a fresh look, maybe?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, at this point, who volunteered on the committee? I imagine it's in the minutes, but if you don't mind telling me, who volunteered to be on this committee, or who, which members do you have now, at this point in time?
Sarah Nomius, the attorney of his name for the sign industry. He volunteered to do it.
How the Stephen Williams scenario, they are in the middle.
Yeah. And he volunteered to do this at no charge to the city.
No. Not necessarily.
For a short session. A short session, one time to come and help us.
Now, Glenn, the committee, the original committee was the mayor's ordinance committee at the start.
So, it wasn't a Plan Commission committee initially?
Spurred trying to satisfy everyone. He appointed addition, that was two committees. So, now we have people appointed by the residents, people appointed by the mayor.
And the mayor's committee consisted of Roy, Steve, Kathy, and Gary. You're getting a pretty sizable committee here, really.
And Blake apologized. I told you I would email you a copy of that draft that Mr. Green went through and reviewed. I apologize, I'll give that to you first thing in the morning. And to the rest of the committee.
And we have Kevin also on there, from the volunteer to last time. Well, okay, so, we're back at square one now, where we have this combined mayor's slash Plan Commission's committee. You comfortable with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I mean, it's a lot of people, you know, it's the same as many cooks in kitchen.
And, yeah, I certainly understand. I'm just glad I'm not chairing. Plan Commission members, what are your thoughts on next steps here? This is just open discussion, we've come to a conclusion here, I think, in a few minutes, I'm not going to prolong this very long, but what do you think is our next steps, with regard to continuing to move, or do we say, there's several options, but.
Well, I'm just reading through the minutes, the committee for the sign, new sign ordinance, doesn't even include Mayor Herbert, so did they kick you off the sign ordinance committee?
He's ex-official.
Okay, so you're, you're in. So, it's just same people plus Sarah Nomius, Rick Blake, and John Green, correct?
And Kevin.
And the attorney, he comes.
I wouldn't ask him to be on the committee.
But you know, Glenn, he was much more reasonable, I'm glad he brought community to the group that would speak to the group that had a manner, and that was us.
I just think it's going to be expensive.
Well, if we, if we try and do anything more with.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a conference call once, if that's what he would do, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to.
No, I wouldn't either.
But commission members originally, the concern of Mr. Green was, he couldn't confront him in the sign ordinance, it was too vague to make questions. So, that's what the real reason was, to form the committee, to clarify things, put everything in its place, make sense. And yes, along the way, we did, while we were redoing this, we did have to fix some issues to bring us up to work with the debate.
Modern things that, if you look at the sign ordinance as it exists, not to interrupt Gary there, things that, in the sign industry, LEDs are now very popular in the sign industry. They didn't even exist as a lighting option when our sign ordinance was written. So, we, one of the things we tried to do was, to be more modern, okay, to be, some of the things we talk about in our ordinance, people don't do, and things that they do do aren't even covered. So, there was to try and bring it to modern times. And Sean had real concerns, he claimed that we, he could never figure out what he could and couldn't do. So, Gary and I and Steve and Kathy looked at a number of other definitions from other towns, and included those where they were better than our definition. We felt our definition was too vague, we said, hey, I like the way they say that, let's put that as, so it was to give you a place to start.
Right, right, thank you. So, Bruce?
Yes.
What, what's your thought on this, where we need to go?
Well, I think what really got my riled up was, Sean Green, he went and did his petition against the sign ordinance, and he had a hundred signatures or so, I guess, as a notebook, that were protesting it, saying that it wasn't fair. And I think the reason behind Sarah Nomius is because she had already struck a deal with Sean Green to put a sign up at their facility. And Mayor Herbert tried to explain to them that they were exempt, you know, from this new sign ordinance. And what we were really looking at, I think, above everybody's opinion is that, we're kind of want to just leave Lincoln Street, you know, the way it is now, and any future development, like this town expands to the west, you know, out toward Honda or something, they can kind of implement this new sign ordinance, where it will all be the same. You won't have pole signs, you won't have ground signs, but it'll look very, very nice, and professional, and clean, and very presentable to the public. And I agree with them, I think that, you know, and we're going to run into all these headaches, because all these businesses downtown Lincoln Street, they tried to explain to them that if you already had a pole structure there, they were exempt from it, that it was allowed, being allowed to be used. And the problem is, and I thought myself, you know, we just got to change the way their perception of the way of thinking is, you know, we got to, I wanted to think, well, I know Mr. Green, he probably specializes in pole signs, he's not following the ground signs, he made that very clear to all of us. But, you know, and I talked to people around town, and I said, and suggest that, you know, look at the Greensboro Hospital sign there, and it's very nice, it's professional, it's ground level, and it's very well, I mean, put together, and it's easy to read. And if you had a whole street of signs compared to that, in size, either be it vertical or horizontal, it would look very professional, and it would look very quaint and presentable. And I think that's what we're striving for.
And we had a lot of discussion on the committee, is that there is still, there is process to go to the BZA. There are places around town where you'd have a hardship trying to put a sign like that.
The new purpose of any sign ordinance, to me, should never be a hardship to a business. And if you interpret any ordinance, you find things that do to that business, they just can't comply, due to the way the building is, or the property is, they can't comply. So, we have to, you know, you're going to have to make exceptions, that's what the BZA's job.
You want those to be as few as possible.
Exactly.
You do, but you want to show an actual hardship.
Right.
Like, if we want, you know, we're going with monument signs, the gal that's got where the cookie crumbles on 421, she doesn't have much parking anyways, so you're going to lose parking if you make her go to a monument sign. And that is, it's a pole sign, to me, makes sense. And you're going to have those instances where that kind of hardship shouldn't show, and not just because I don't want to deal with changing ordinance, and show no hardship.
Yeah, I don't want to get into discussing the pros and cons, I'm talking, I'd like for us to say, what do we need to do, next steps here?
Can I ask to be on this committee? Is that possible? I mean, I know, what's one more, but I feel I can add a little business background to it as well, I understand that there's some business owners on here now, but I would like to add to it, I have, if we're not going to talk about reasons for the signs, then we'll talk about it in our committee meeting, I won't go into it now. But I do, you know, when they kept going back to the carmel and Naples, those are what we're going after, there's good and there's bad, I would like to be able to discuss that, I think maybe this is the time to do it. That's why I'm kind of trying to ask if I can be on the committee.
And it sounds like it's ending up now, it isn't, with your permission, it is the commission's committee at this point in time, and let's just.
Yeah, you got more on there.
It's just, let's just, well, my point is, let's just, this is the place where the draft has to come, and let the committee work from here, bring it back here, and then, because it's going to not just end here, it has to go to the city council, too.
The reason I did is to get something started, to clarify.
I'm a hundred percent support, I'm not worried about that. Kevin, what, so, from what you, Bruce is saying, from what Roy's indicated, and what Blake has said, we need to continue, we don't want to just leave it lagging, we need to move it.
No, it definitely needs to be addressed.
Okay, and we need to get it finalized?
We need to make some new laws.
Okay. John, you willing to do that? Okay. Well, with everyone's indulgence, we've got Blake, Blake and Kevin, and Roy, from this commission, or on the committee.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, okay, thank you, we'll do that. Proposed, at this point in time, committee members, provided we elect Blake to that committee. Blake and Kevin and Roy from this committee, Steve Moore from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the members of the public or business community outside of, would be Sean, and Rick, and Sarah. Ex-official members, Kathy, Gary, and Gary.
Do you have questions? Is there any instructions on the forum, by commission, to be, to be of us?
There would be, if you've got three members of the commission.
There's seven of us.
Yes.
That's not a forum. Forum was four.
Forum was four, but I think it triggered three.
Well, you have four. You say John?
John's on another board. John's not on this board. We said, we said Steve, or?
Did John pitch?
No, I didn't say John.
He was just asking if he has opinion of the idea of moving forward.
Would you be okay with three with this?
Well, that's my, my, the point is, if three, if there's seven members, it's more a matter of the majority, right, that you're worried about?
There are, it's my understanding that once you get into bodies where there are enough members, you don't necessarily run into trouble with having a quorum, you run into trouble with having just enough members, you don't necessarily have to have a quorum present to constitute a meeting.
I got you.
Just enough out of the group. And I think three might be the trigger, I don't know, without, without looking at it tonight.
Okay. So, we may need to rethink.
And for what it's worth, obviously, it's up to the commission how you handle it. The committee can entertain, the committee can convene on its own and entertain comments from the public, so if there's some concern as to whether or not Blake will have an opportunity to present whatever kind of materials or positions he may have, I'm not trying to suggest that you shouldn't be on the committee, but if there's a concern that if you don't add him to the committee, he won't be able to hear from you, that's not a concern.
So, your advice is that we only have two people from this board?
I wouldn't have any more than three.
Well, yeah, I don't, I wouldn't have any more than three, if three is okay. All right, so, we can't. Blake, you still interested in being serving on the committee?
So, we can have three? Blake said yes. I'll serve on the committee.
Is there, you put that form of motion for yourself?
Yeah.
I need a second, then.
Second.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think you can move to a plan yourself.
Well, that's my, my, the point is, if three, if there are seven members, it's more a matter of, of the majority, right? If you're worried about?
There are, it's my understanding that once you get into bodies where there are enough members, you don't necessarily run into trouble with having a forum, you run into trouble with having just enough members. You don't necessarily have to have a forum, which is a constituent, you need just enough out of the group. And I think three might be the trigger. I don't know, without, without looking at it today.
Okay. So, we may need to re, rethink.
And for, for what it's worth, obviously, it's up to the commission how you handle it. The committee can entertain, the committee can convene on its own and entertain comments from the public, so if there's some concern as to whether or not Blake will have an opportunity to present whatever kind of materials or positions he may have. I'm not trying to suggest that you shouldn't be on the committee, but if there's a concern that if you don't add him to the committee, he won't be able to hear from you, that's, that's not a concern.
So, your advice is that we only have two people from this board?
I wouldn't have any more than three.
Well, yeah, I don't, I wouldn't have any more than three, if three is okay. All right, so we can. Blake, you still interested in being, serving on the committee?
So we can have three? I believe so, yeah. I'll serve on the committee more.
Is there, you put that form of motion for yourself? I need a second, then.
Second.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think you can move to appoint yourself.
Probably not.
All right, I'll move to appoint Blake to the committee.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Move and seconded, any further question? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we have a committee consisting of Roy and Kevin and Blake and Steve Moore, Rick Blake, Sarah Nomius, Sean Green. With ex-official members from that. So, your proposal then, I suppose, are you gonna chair the?
I can.
What, you?
Sure.
Your proposal then would be to reconvene this group, and is the desire to have something for us at our February board meeting?
Way. We went, we went through so many surrounding communities' ordinances and comparisons.
You're gonna have to bring all these people that we've added this week.
We went through volumes.
I mean, we've had, we had many meetings to get to the point where we're at. And it's gonna be six months, probably.
All right, that's fine. In the meantime, we have an ordinance, and we will buy by it.
We usually try to, to meet somewhere between four, 4:30, before these boards meet, or before the Warren Board meets, or before some of the other boards that Kathy and I sat on met. Maybe we have to be here later in the evening. Try to make it so we weren't having a lot of extra meetings, or we could still get people to come to the other day.
All right. We do need to appoint a chair, apparently, as opposed to the chair appointing a chair.
Well, shouldn't, would, Bryce, wouldn't the committee appoint a chair then at its first meeting, or do we need to do it ahead of time?
I think a committee could, but I, I, I think in terms of, in terms of accountability, I'd like to, I'd like to have a chair appointed, so that we can go ahead and move. And if the committee doesn't like the person that, that we appoint, then they'll just have to impeach him and point them. Yeah, yeah. So, we do need a chair appointed for this committee. Nominations are open, if any of, any of the members of that committee, or ex-official.
I nominate Gary. A second.
There's a second. Are there any other nominations? Any other nomination? Once, twice? Okay. All those in favor of Gary Murray as chair of this sign ordinance committee, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. So, Mr. Murray, you are, you're the chair. We will, I, I guess, I would ask that there be a, a report at the next meeting, just status. If you've met, what your, what your game plan is in terms of moving this forward. Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, ladies, have there any other matters come for this meeting? Anybody from the public that wishes to be heard? We have a motion for adjournment. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.